Welcome to Santa Barbara Talks with Josh Molina. It's such a pleasure today to be here with somebody who has an outstanding reputation in the community, but someone I don't really know super well. So I'm looking forward to having a conversation with him. And of course, he's running for office. So we're going to talk about that. Sam Ramirez, Galita City Council candidate. How are you doing today?
Doing pretty good, Josh. Just finished going for a run to kind of clear my head and you know, ran four miles this morning. And you know, I think I'm now literally running for city council. So I'm pretty excited and um, you know, about the campaign and what's, you know, the next hundred and forty days.
Great. Well, Sam, I cover the city of Santa Barbara. You are a city employee. So your name has come up and I've sort of seen and been familiar a little bit with your work. But today we're going to be talking about you and your run for Galita City Council. And so I guess you're announcing this week and you're coming out and just saying, hey, you know, you're in full force, ready to do this. So I just want to talk to you about it. Can you talk to me, Sam, about why you're running for Galita City Council? What your issues are, your passion, what you care about? Give people a sense of why this position matters to you.
Great. Uh, thank you for the question. And thank you for having me on. Yeah, I'm a regular listener, a big fan of your work. And um, as you, as you mentioned, you know, yeah, I work for the city of Santa Barbara and you know, try to stay under the radar, you know, most of the time, but some of the work that I do regarding negotiations and you know, staffing the CFC, you know, uh, has kind of allowed me to meet variety of people and do some good work. Uh, but yeah, I'm on the city planning commission here in Galita. And I've thought about it for the last few months after watching kind of the redistricting process. And you know, putting my name in the hat for city council, specifically the second district. Galita is my home. This is where I've, uh, my wife and I bought our first home. This is where we've chosen to raise our family. And I'm pretty excited about, you know, meeting voters and talking to constituents and kind of sharing the vision that I have uh, for why I'm running for Galita City Council.
Great. So you're on the Galita Planning Commission. So I forgot to mention that. So you have some familiarity with the planning and the the land use issues. Talk to me about the issues in Galita that that are causing you to run. Now, we know with district elections, we have a whole new thing where people can run. It's smaller. It's based off of geography, population. So it's allowing you to to run for this seat. But what are the the citywide issues that you're concerned about?
I think the citywide issues are very similar to just the second district issues when it comes to to housing. I I think that, you know, there are a number of issues that are important, but none more important than the availability and affordability of housing. I think that's kind of the number one priority that's on everybody's mind. And we're all impacted by the lack of housing or at the very least a housing policy that kind of addresses needs of seniors, needs of working families, needs of veterans. So that's a a big issue that I'm going to talk about over the next couple of months on the campaign trail. Public safety is another issue. I think that when we talk about public safety, it's not just being safe from fire and safe from crime, but safety as in the neighborhoods that don't have sidewalks. And I see a number of families and kids that have to walk in the middle of the street because their street or their neighborhood doesn't have a sidewalk. And there's too many of those that are throughout the second district that need to be addressed. I think that there's an issue with crime when it comes to, uh, you know, there's a ton of auto theft and catalytic converters. You can look at every headline. And so I think that, you know, there's a number of neighborhoods that don't even have street lighting. And I think that that, those things that other neighborhoods take for granted are areas that are lacking in second district. So so housing, uh, public safety. And one of the last things is vision. Where I know where the city of Galita has been over the last twenty years, but where does it want to go over the next twenty? You know, and that's one of the things that I'm, I'm really focused on. I I think that we've talked and talked and talked about, you know, some of these issues for year after year after year. But at some point, we need to get beyond the talking stage and we need to get toward action. And I think that I think that there needs to be a better conversation uh, around those issues and more focused and more action oriented. So um, it's something that like I said, there's a number of other things that are going to come up, you know, the business climate, how we work with our businesses, you know, to address their needs is going to be important. How we partner with schools and nonprofit organizations is important to me. Um, you know, my wife works for the Galita School District. And so I see kind of the impact of, you know, uh, of kids and what happens, you know, at the school level. But what about on weekends? What about after two thirty? When they become, you know, regular citizens of the of the community. And so I look forward to that part as well.
Let's talk about a couple of the Galita issues. You obviously mentioned housing and if you listen to the show, whenever I talk about Galita, I talk about growing up in Galita and just sort of really appreciating what this community is in terms of its ruralness, but also the fact that it's a real family oriented community. It's a working class community and it's close to Santa Barbara, but it has in many ways a lot more services in terms of what Gersh Park offers and sort of the shopping experience, you know, we've got the nice targets. Santa Barbara's got the other target, you know, there it's, I love Galita. It's changed over the years. We've seen this explosion of housing and we're going to probably see more housing. Obviously, the state is mandating housing for every community. When you look at how much housing we built in Galita the last few years, and then we look at like, we're going to need to continue to build. Where do you see sort of spots to build in Galita? Like, where are the sites that we want to put any future apartments or housing units?
Well, it's it's interesting that you brought up the the state and and I think the state has kind of taken a role in in terms of housing because they know that a lot of local communities have actually failed on this issue. Um, but there isn't a one size fits all, you know, across the state. And I'm not trying to create Miami, Florida with, you know, skyscrapers of housing. I I that's not um, my vision and my my goal. And I think there's an opportunity for mixed use. I think that, you know, Old Town could benefit from some mixed use development. Uh, I where I live off of Los Canaros, I think that, um, you know, there used to be just vacant fields. And that's actually one of the reasons why I live where I live, because by chance I was driving by when they were doing construction. And when, when, when do they often do construction? So now, you know, I've, I've been a recipient and a a beneficiary of housing in Galita and, you know, immediately trying to be involved in the community. I have a great, some great neighbors that have become great friends. Uh, across the street there, you know, one of the topics that's come up is Heritage Ridge, which is kind of this, you know, senior affordable market project. And that's kind of a a topic that's going to address some housing issues. But there isn't a one size fits all. And I think that I think we are, we are seeing the consequences of kind of this checkerboard. You know, where do we go? Where do we build? And I think that needs to be better planned. I think that there's an opportunity to collaborate with UC Santa Barbara. Um, you know, when we talk about what they do, what UC Santa Barbara does and doesn't do impacts the city of Galita. And, you know, we need to do a better job of communicating. There's, I think, some potential litigation and there's some, you know, uh, back and forth between what how they're addressing housing and how they should be doing it. Um, but I think that there's just pockets of town that can be repurposed, rezone. Um, you know, down the street from me is Cortona. And so there's certain areas that are just more conducive to housing. But I think that we need to use every tool in our toolbox to, you know, address the needs of people in Galita. And and anytime there's a lack of supply, anytime there's a lack and an increased demand, that impacts the rental market and, you know, the the for sale market. And a lot of times it's minority communities, people of color that are impacted the most because they can't get into the market to buy and build equity. And and I think that we need to do more to to create ownership. And I'm not looking for just single family. I think that there's opportunities for townhomes and condos and kind of this mixed use. And I, you know, look forward to kind of having this conversation with all stakeholders that are involved in it.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's true. You can't just say we need to rezone commercial buildings and put housing. There needs to be sort of a uh, uh, look at every possible way. The ag land we have in Galita, um, we know that it takes a vote of the people to approve housing in that Bishop Ranch area. But you know, you lived in Los Canaros, that was open space before it became housing. Do you do you think that we should be looking at agricultural space as a site for housing? We've already done some of that, but should we do more of that? Or is it more infill to the commercial?
I, I think we should look at infill first before we start to kind of, you know, bust out at the seams and kind of go around the edges. Um, but there's definitely an opportunity to kind of, you know, whether it be mixed use, whether it be, you know, ag is important. You know, I grew up in the Central Valley, which is surrounded by agriculture. And so I know the benefit of of ag land, of preserving kind of 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 the the makeup of the community. But I also know that anytime we take certain things off the table, then that's just one less tool available for us addressing housing needs, which is on every, everybody's mind from students, working families and seniors.
Okay. Well, like I say, uh, I know I'm not running. It's your running. But like I told James Carriaco, I tell everyone on the council is like, when you guys decide to 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 have some project for that Bishop Ranch Ranch area, that's the end. Because uh, those of us who grew up in Galita, we we enjoy that that open space right there, you know, so. Uh, let me talk to you about some other Galita city issues which are old town. Okay, so there's a lot of talk right now of making Old Town more conducive to bicycle travel for pedestrian travel, making it one lane in each direction, maybe extending the sidewalks, reconfiguring parking, maybe putting in the middle, angled parking on the side, restriping. What's your vision for what Old Town Galita should look like?
Well, a great topic because it's something that has come up, you know, over the last many years. And, you know, I think that reasonable people can disagree on kind of the, you know, the issue. But I think that nobody can disagree that, you know, that downtown would benefit from making it safer for bicyclists, making it safer safer for pedestrians. My, my daughter learned to swim in in Old Town and swim with Finn. And it was very interesting trying to navigate, you know, with uh, an infant, you know, trying to cross the street on Hollister and really trying to navigate those things. And so there's definitely a need to, you know, to do something different than than has been done. And whether it be, you know, you know, the current parking, we're reducing it from four lanes to two, whether it be island parking. I I think that there's definitely opportunities, but it needs to be a bottom up approach versus a top down. And I think that the residents have a uh, an opportunity for for them to weigh in. And I think that, you know, it's one thing for an engineer to say, hey, this is what the plan is. But it's another thing for the neighborhood and the residents to really have an opportunity to weigh in as well. And I think that the outreach isn't probably where it needs to be. I think that, you know, they've been talking about this for, again, for twenty years, but at some point we need to do something. And I don't know if we're, we're there yet, but I know the conversations that they had at the city council level, maybe two weeks ago. You know, they had to put a pause on it because it just, it was, it was, you know, wasn't either well thought out. It wasn't either communicated to the public. And so I'm glad the council put the brakes on that to make sure that there's some, you know, conversations because at the end of the day, people want an opportunity to be heard. They want an opportunity to know that their input and that their opinion is valued, that their interest is uh, is thought of. And you know, I think that when you have these meetings at Tuesday on on Election Day, no less, you know, at five thirty six, I don't think that it allows for the community to weigh in like they should. And so I think that that the conversation needs to be taken to the people that are going to be most impacted, the businesses, the neighborhoods. Because they're the ones, it's easy for, you know, an engineer that lives out of town, you know, to create their study. But at the end of the day, we have to live with those decisions. And I think that if you're involved in the process, it makes those decisions a little bit easier to live with.
Yeah, there've been a lot of good work in Old Town, you know, the sidewalks now in in sort of, um, the neighborhoods in Old Town, there's a sidewalk on at least one side of every street. And that's, that's significant. Um, they did add that park, uh, Johnny Wallace Park. And you sort of see some, some things changing. But for large part of Galita, like in terms of the street, Old Town, it looks the same way it did five, ten, fifteen, twenty years ago. And, you know, it's tough though, because the the business community is doing well. I mean, you don't see vacant storefronts in Old Town Galita like you do Santa Barbara. So it's, it's a juggling act because on one hand, something needs to be done in terms of circulation and transportation. The other hand, this community seems to work really well the way it is. It may not look like a manicured downtown. That's a tourist attraction. But for the people who go there, it's, uh, it works really well. There are a lot of services. But but yeah, as you know, as somebody who's raised kids, you try to find parking to go somewhere downtown. You know, it's like, better be a good parallel parker because if you're not, you know, you're going to be walking along.
Yeah. And parking and parking is probably the the major deterrent for people not wanting to go down there because you know, if they're going to have to battle for twenty minutes or have to walk, you know, you know, half a mile to go to Santa Cruz Market, they're going to just go to the marketplace or they're going to go to uh, Camino Real. And so I think that there's an opportunity to kind of, you know, and I think also part of it is that pedestrian safety, right? You know, we don't want anybody to be hurt. And I think that that you know, Milpa's, you know, is a good model in Santa Barbara for what to do and not to do. And so I think that, um, you know, we kind of, you know, need to do better. We need to do more. And I look forward to kind of, you know, hearing what the council does and, uh, you know, weighing in on that as well throughout this process.
Yeah. You know, one of the other things I wanted to ask you about in terms of issues is there's talk about a sales tax on the November ballot, uh, to to fund services. And I just wanted to know, like, what do you, what do you think about? About that? Is that something you're in support of? Need more information? Where do you stand on this proposal?
I know they, I know they also are going to talk about it probably tomorrow, I think. Um, you know, talking about the sales tax measure that they're going to put on the November ballot. I think ultimately it's up to the voters to kind of decide, you know, where where they are. But, you know, what I want to know is how the city plans on using the money, right? I think it needs to kind of, I know it's given a kind of a broad overview, but I think it needs a little bit more, um, you know, some more specific details about, you know, how it's going to use it. And I think also it's not so much about bringing in more money because, as you know, with the revenue neutrality agreement, you know, a lot of the money, even though this may not apply to it, but a lot of the money that the city brings in through Target, through Home Depot, through Best Buy, it goes to twenty, I think twenty, twenty-five percent goes to the county. And so I think that there's, you know, I think that's you know, an opportunity to kind of just, you know, look at, all right, how are we going to spend this money? If we're, if we're going to ask voters, you know, to, in, you know, increase the sales tax, what are we going to use it for? I mean, I think we need to have a clear kind of plan of how we're going to do that. Um, you know, because I'm all for public safety. I'm all for public works improvements. I I think that there's a benefit to that. I just want better details about where that, um, where that money is going to be used. And then secondly, I don't know, the timing is the best because, you know, we just came out of recession, right? So just personally, you know, economically, or assuming not a recession, out of pandemic. And we're, we're now, what does, is there a recession down the way? What does that look like? And so I have some concerns, but generally I'm, I'm okay with it, especially if it goes to the voters, because ultimately it's them that will need to decide. And it's a general tax, so it's kind of that fifty percent threshold, which is a little bit different than the specific tax. But, um, you know, I think that there's a lot to uh, to be discussed regarding, you know, how that money is going to be used. And how the, you know, second district specifically, how Galita benefits from that additional sales tax.
Yeah. Let's talk about you a little bit in the context of this, uh, political campaign. Um, I know James Carriaco, who is your opponent so far in, you know, in this contest, he's the incumbent. Covered him for many years, uh, he's been around. Um, it's hard to beat incumbents. Like, we we know that incumbents have a an advantage, uh, just the the name recognition, they're on the ballot. Uh, but now we have district elections, so that sort of changes. And one of the, one of the goals of district elections has been uh, to increase representation. Okay. And so you are a, uh, Latino, Mexican American, Hispanic. Okay, so that's exactly why we have district elections is to allow people who may not be able to wage a a citywide big campaign, but can run from their community and represent their community. So it seems as though in this case, district collections is already working because you know, we're getting somebody who's who's going to run, who looks a lot like the community of of Galita. Uh, but it's tough. Can you talk to me about your decision to to do this? Uh, not to discount your candidacy, but just just historically, it's hard to take out an incumbent unless an incumbent has done something egregious. Can you talk about the calculus and what role, what does it mean, the fact that you're a Mexican American who looks more like this community? And you know, what, why is that compelling you to run?
Uh, yeah, sure. Absolutely. Um, so I didn't take this decision to run lightly. You know, I spent a lot of time thinking about it, spent a lot of time talking with my family about it, praying about it and really just know, knowing that I was going to run for the right reasons. And a- as I mentioned earlier, this is where my family lives. This is where I, you know, I want my kids to grow up. I want to play a role in the shaping of our future. And I, as I mentioned, you know, we know what the last twenty years are, and I'm focused on on the next twenty. And, you know, this redistricting process, you know, came as a result of, you know, uh, an alleged violation of, you know, racial polarized voting. And they created a district, the second district, that is majority minority. And so I think that shared life experience matters. And and I'm not running because my last name is Ramirez. I'm running because I have a vision of where I think that the district can be. And when we talk about incumbency, you know, if we were rewind back to, you know, twenty eighteen, there were two spots on the city council available. There were only two candidates. So, you know, whether it be James or any other candidate, they're going to have to take their vision, their track record to the voters. And and it's something that, you know, over the last three or four weekends, you know, I've been walking, you know, every weekend and and introducing myself to voters and really kind of understanding kind of what their their needs are, what their issues are. And and I've never shied away from hard work. I've never taken the easy road. You know, I went to Sacramento State for college and, you know, got a degree in government and it wasn't easy to do that. But but I did, you know, uh, was able to save up money to buy a house. It wasn't easy, but I did. And so I think that, you know, I think we all benefit from, you know, being held accountable, um, going through the process, the rigors of a campaign. And at the end of the day, I'm going to share my vision with, uh, the second district. Other candidates can do the same. And we'll see where the voters, uh, decide to put their votes.
Hmm. And did you have any sense of, uh, should I do this personally? Because James nominated you for planning commission? Was that a factor? Like, hey, this guy gave me an opportunity and now I'm going to try to take his spot. And that's not a judgment question. But did you think about those things? Or that's just how it goes?
Yeah, yeah, it was a, it was a thought that, it was a thought that came up. And I, you know, even before I decided to run, you know, I I I gave, you know, James a call and said, hey, this is what I'm going to do. And, you know, give him the courtesy, I think that, you know, the respect that um, that he deserves. And, you know, again, I'm not running against him. And that, you know, when I was going through the appointment process for the planning commission, they hadn't even started the redistricting process. So I didn't know, I didn't know where my neighborhood would end up. I didn't know that I would even decide to run for city council. Um, it was just kind of through both the being on the planning commission, you know, being a resident of Galita, kind of hearing, you know, people talk about problems that hadn't been solved for, you know, for many years and for decades. And so I think that uh, the city could benefit from a new approach. And, you know, the, my appointment to the city council was five zero. So it wasn't just, you know, one person supported me and that was it. You know, the the overall council did. And I don't, my feelings about, you know, the Galita don't change because, you know, who who appointed me or not? I think I care about the community. I I care about, you know, its future. And I want to do more and I want to be involved. And so this this district election allows for that opportunity.
Yeah, good. And I want to make clear, like, you're no rookie here. Um, you know, I cover politics and we have people running for school board and all of these obscure positions. And they're like, came out of the woodwork and I want to run because I think I'm a good candidate. That's not you. You, let's talk about your, your past a little bit. You are a former elected official in the city of Delano and you served two terms. So you've actually been in a very high profile role elected by voters in the community you grew up in. So when you decide to run, this isn't as though you're just sort of dreaming big. You have experience and you feel as though you want to be able to use your experience to help you serve in this community. So we should just make that that clear, that you have a background and a record. So so talk to me about why you sought public service and your time in Delano and how that whole thing happened, getting elected.
Yeah, um, yeah. So I've loved politics since I was in fourth grade, you know, since I wrote my member of Congress, you know, in fourth grade. Um, been, you know, to I, it's to, I just loved policy and politics for the the longest time. And the COVID nineteen pandemic was a reminder that leadership matters and not just at the federal level, at the state level, but even at a local level like city council and at the school board. And so, yeah, I was, uh, you know, fresh out of college. I was, you know, just moved back from Sacramento, grew up in the Central Valley in Delano and city of about fifty thousand people now and about three hundred employees. And I just knew that the city needed more and, you know, talked to a lot of people and it just wasn't representing, you know, families and, you know, it needed change. And so as a twenty-five year old, twenty-six year old, I put my name in the hat, you know, worked hard, walked precincts, shared that vision and and on the night of the election, you know, lost by a handful of votes. And, you know, of course, you know, absentee provisional ballots still haven't been processed. And you know, after three weeks of counting ballots, on the final day of certification, as a twenty-six year old, I won by seventeen votes. And was able to do that first term, was able to work hard, you know, get things done for economic development, for youth, for public safety. And so the best report card that an incumbent has is their reelection. And so four years later, when I was up for reelection, I was the number one vote getter, you know, the night of and found out that I was reelected and was able to continue that work. And and so public service has been a part of my life, you know, ever since, you know, my mom took me to my first city council meeting and said, this is where they make decisions every Monday and you need to be involved. And I'm glad that she did because it just became kind of a a part of my life. And, you know, I'd always been involved in public service anyways, you know, coaching. I used to work for the California State Assembly. Um, and so, you know, public service isn't new to me, you know, as as you mentioned, I worked for the city of Santa Barbara and those life experiences kind of matter. They they matter when it comes to navigating red tape, when it comes to policy, when it comes to helping people. And I think that the the community benefits if you have the technical skills. And I think I've demonstrated both through my professional career, my my education, that I have the technical skills. And then secondly, that I have the empathy and the sympathy for people that I care about. I don't have any visions of running beyond city council. You know, I just want to make that very clear. You know, I don't want to go to Sacramento, don't want to go to DC. I I believe that all politics is local. And I think that we can benefit from people that have the community's, um, interest at heart, which which I I do. And the last thing is that that vision that I'm going to keep on kind of talking about because you know, vision matters. And I think that there's an opportunity for us to really shape the next twenty years in a way that you know, where ten percent of our community isn't in poverty. You know, where there are more people that are in elective office, that are more minorities that are stepping up. And this is an opportunity. I didn't want to wait two years and I didn't want to wait four years because the ti- the time is now and and we can't wait sometimes for problems to be solved.
Yeah, yeah. What a story. What was it like that election night when you saw you were behind? Did you just well, that's it, I'm done? Or were you kind of hoping there'd be like some difference? Or tell me about what's going through your body, just knowing, oh, it's so close, but it didn't happen.
Yeah, the the night of, I I the results where I was down, I lost by fifty-three votes. And this is even before I knew that there's provisional absentee ballots still to be counted. And fifty-three is just, you start to do the math, you know, what neighbor didn't vote, what friend didn't vote? And just, or could I, could I have walked more? Could I have done more? And I think that it, it goes back to Election Day. And and I walked probably like six or seven hours that day. And I was tired. It was like five o'clock. And I'm like, I'm going to call it a day and say, well, I'll do one more house. And so I get to the gate and I said, my name's Sam Ramirez. He says, I already voted for you. I said, oh, you did? And he said, yeah, I did. And so that gave me the energy that I needed for, to walk another two or three hours. So fast forward to election night, lose my fifty-three votes, don't make it. Call up a friend, email friend and said, hey, I still want to be involved. You know, I'm not going to give up, you know, just because I didn't make it. Said, yeah, there's still absentee provisional ballots left. And they counted the twelve thousand. I was only down twenty-two votes. They counted another ten thousand. I was only down twenty votes. And on the last day, after five o'clock, when they certified, I won by seventeen votes. And so a stark reminder that every vote matters, especially in, you know, small district like the second district. And I think that people think that their vote doesn't matter. Look at city of Santa Barbara, you know, uh, council member Alahoua, you won by just a handful of votes. And I think that you know, I think that I'm going to continue to work hard. I'm a big sports guy. I I I'm an avid runner, run, you know, ran track and cross country in high school and college and marathon runner. And I've seen too many sports where every second matters. Every, you know, you go to the clock. Um, you know, the buzzer sets. And so I'm going to work hard and, you know, like I said, you know, I love public service. And so, you know, even if I am, or if I'm not elected to Galita City Council, I'm still going to be involved. You know, I coached my daughter's AYSO soccer team, you know, la- last year, I'm on my HOA Board of Directors. I'm the treasurer for HOA. And so you know, what, public service is a part of my life and you can do a lot without ever having been, having been elected. And so, you know, what, public service is a part of my life, and you can do a lot without ever having been having been elected. You know, I mentioned that I grew up in Delano, you know, home of Caesar Chavez and Dolores Huerta and the United Farm Workers. And so they were never in elected office, but they made an impression on, you know, even to this day that's been kind of felt. And so that's gonna be my position going forward.
Yeah, that's great. Hey, it's a nonpartisan race, but I do want to ask you about the role of the Democratic Party and just the politics. Are are you a registered Democrat?
I am a registered Democrat.
So one of the things that's influential here and really helped Alejandro Gutierrez, who, of course, she grew up in the community. And she she worked hard, so I'm not taking anything away from her. But the A votes were were, you know, probably the Democratic Party knocking on doors, calling, trying to get rid of Jason Dominguez. Who they did not like, you know. And so I think one of the things that new people, people new to the community sort of underestimate is that. Here, if you're a Democrat, sort of the path is, you better hook up with the Democratic Party. Because it's gonna increase the likelihood of you winning. Now, I'm not saying that you can't win. There's other people who who've not been endorsed by them and have won. But it is sort of an interesting dynamic, especially when you're dealing with candidates of color. There is a sense in the party of wait, timing, not now. If you wait now, we'll find a spot for you down the road. And a lot of people don't like that, you know, it kind of goes against the grain of. Just people who have these spirits of, I want to play in the game now, and I'm capable, give me a shot. But politics is, of course, of course, complicated at all. Did you have any interaction with them or did you try to seek their endorsement? Or what was that like?
I did, and I'm, as you know, you know, this is a, you know, a nonpartisan race, but I am a registered Democrat. And, you know, it's I sought the Democratic Party endorsement, you know, kind of, you know, talked to a variety of folks within the party to kind of just outline. You know, why I was running. And I believe in, I believe in what I'm doing. And, you know, would I have, I appreciate every endorsement that I I receive, you know, I appreciate every meeting that I have to at least make my case. And I think that's really what is important, you know, I think, as I know about sports. That I don't think people mind not getting endorsement, not winning. But at the very least, especially as a candidate and as a person of color as well, that. As long as the opportunity is fair, as long as the process is fair. And, you know, so I'm gonna, you know, continue to kind of, you know, articulate my message of why I'm running. And I'm gonna continue to seek endorsements and continue to, you know, share, you know, my experience and how I can help. The second district and how I can help Galita and and how, you know, I'm qualified to be on the city council. And but the endorsement isn't what is driving, you know, my run. It's, you know, something that I believe in, something I feel strongly about, something I feel passionate about. And, you know, I'm 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 committed to this thing. And, you know, for the next hundred forty days, I'm gonna, again, articulate and share my message of why I'm running. And what I hope to bring to Galita City Council.
Yeah, great. And one one thing, a time in Delano as a city council member, how do you think that's gonna help you? Like, what are some of the issues that you dealt with there that brings you an experience level that here in Galita, you're gonna be able to apply that to?
I think there's a couple, you know, there's a couple of attributes and characteristics that you want in a leader, regardless of what. What board they're on, regardless of what city they represent in it, you know, it's the the ability to to listen, the ability to learn, the ability to think critically. I think that's important. Do you care? Do you care about the people that you're serving? I think that's just as important as technical ability as well. And then and then lastly about vision, I think that the community benefits, you know, when you have a shared vision, when you have a vision of where you want the next twenty years to go. And and so I think that, you know, collaboration is gonna be important. I think that there's opportunities for us to collaborate with the school district, especially in post COVID. I think that really is what is important. I think there's an opportunity to kind of reimagine and reinvent what government can be, what government can do. And one of the things, you know, that I'd be interested in is the 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 city has this approach where. Hey, we sent out a press release, you know, we can put a check mark by this box. Hey, we had a meeting at five thirty at City Hall, nobody showed up. We can put a check mark by this box. And I think that what people are kind of, you know, disenfranchised with just government and politics in general. Is one, partly because it is become very hyper partisan. And I think when we talk about sidewalks and we talk about potholes. Those aren't partisan issues, those are, those are just people issues. But I think also what I what I'd like to do is on an annual basis, biannual or even quarterly, or probably biannual. Is take our council meetings and take them into the district. There's no reason why on any given Tuesday, we can't have an opportunity for people. That, you know, don't have transportation, they don't have the time, they don't have the energy, you gotta make them trek all across the city. There's no reason why we couldn't take a council meeting into the district. And I think that's just one opportunity to make sure people are involved. Last last Tuesday, I think the city had this sales tax meeting from ten thirty to twelve. To talk about the priorities of where we wanted the priorities of that sales tax money to go. Most people on a Tuesday from ten thirty to twelve are at work, Josh. And so I think that we need to do better outreach to get, and then it's not that they don't care about this issue, they're impacted the most. But I think that we need to take government to the people, and I think that there's missed opportunities to do that, and and I hope to change that.
Great, okay. Well, I think a lot of people are gonna be excited about your candidacy, Sam. And they're gonna get to know you over the next hundred and forty days, people who don't know you already. I want to give you the last word here, just sort of, you know, your pitch, you've talked about it, I've asked you some questions. But give me the last word here, anyone who's watching this this video, who's thinking about, you know, making a casting a vote in this district. Why should they vote for for Sam Ramirez?
Yeah, well, I grew up in a in a city of Delano that, you know, has been shaped by this CSEP weather, you know, yes, you, yes, we can attitude. And I think that there is an opportunity to shape Galita in a way that makes sense for all of us. And when it comes to housing and public safety, and I I am going to work hard. As hard as I'll work on the campaign, I'll work even harder when elected office, you know. And again, I've been walking doors for the last three or four weeks, talking to voters, you know, sharing kind of what I want to do. But all I can commit to is that I will work hard, that I will make the district proud, that I will, you know, listen, that I will articulate a way that. You know, gets us all across the finish line, so that when we talk about the good land, that it's good for all of us and not just some of us. And so, you know, thank you for having me today. Now, I look forward to meeting voters and sharing, you know, why I'm running for city council. So thank you, Josh.
Okay, yeah, take care. We'll talk soon. Have a great day. Good luck. Thank you.